Commissioner Lawrence, please.
Let's pray together today. Father, we thank you for the privilege that we have to serve you. We thank you for the privilege that we have to serve our community. And Lord, I pray that you'd give us wisdom to know exactly what to do and to bring honor and glory to you. And I ask these things in our precious Lord and Savior's name. Amen.
Amen. Commissioner Northrup.
To the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Here.
Commissioner Northrup.
Here.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Here.
Commissioner Barrera.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
And Commissioner Lee.
Here.
All right, everybody is here. Before I open the floor for public comment on agenda items only, I'm going to remind everybody that this is a professional setting. It is not a stage for grandstanding or anything like that. And if anybody gets out of hand, I will put this meeting on recess. That includes me. And I've got the gavel between me and my vice chair. If I get out of hand, my vice chair has the full authority to do the same thing. So with that said, the floor is now open for public comment. You have three minutes.
First of all, I want to thank Chair Barti, Commissioner Lawrence, for that prayer. I think that prayer reflects what every person, each and every person on this committee wants to have in their day. So I appreciate that at the start of this meeting. I would indicate that I'd like to comment briefly on two closed session agenda items. I think as you know, boards can go into closed session provided they follow the required statutory procedures. It's not always a simple process. As a matter of fact-
Your mic's not on, Vic.
You want me to start over?
No, you've got 2 minutes 28 seconds.
Okay, thank you. It can be fairly complicated and involved area of the law. And I think that's evidenced by the fact that we had not one, not two, but three different agendas put out for today's meeting, particularly as it relates to the closed sessions. And that's not a bad thing. I applaud the commissioners for their diligence in endeavoring to get this right. I also, I think you know that I have a role in this matter because again, the Prosecutor's Office of the Open Meetings Act is violated. We have civil and criminal actions that we have to consider. So that's why I'm putting on this in the past as well as here today. Commenting on the two closed session items, first of all, M114, to get a legal opinion. The last, the current agenda properly states the statute in which that's allowed. I think that's a good thing, and I would encourage you to do that, to go into closed sessions for that reason, to consider that attorney opinion. Again, good thing. But after you've done that, there is the issue of 114-2025, specifically the issue of whether a responding employee can attend those sessions. Some of you may perhaps, on the advice of civil counsel, feel that you can exclude this employee. However, I advise you that in that area there is a significant divide. I've communicated with, on this issue in the last week with eight different veteran prosecutors, former assistant, former prosecutors, assistant prosecutors, and assistant attorney generals, including at least one who is recognized in prosecution circles as a statewide leader in the area of the Open Meetings Act, well over to, or excuse me, approaching 250 years of prosecution experience. These are the people that prosecute these things and bring the civil suits. And it is a unanimous consensus of these eight veteran prosecutors that if you exclude this individual, you are violating the Open Meetings Act. You know, also when attorneys speak, that's also a good thing. Ninety percent of the time we get issues resolved. I've reached out to civil counsel on this multiple times this week. I know they have a very busy schedule. They want to meet, they want to talk, but that has not been achieved. This matter is only eight days old. There are significant civil and criminal issues at stake. Let's not go around this curve too fast. I suggest slowing the roll just a little bit while the attorneys on both sides of this issue to talk, see if we can find that common ground. Finally, I'd indicate that again, in regard to the investigation, you might consider retired police officers or retired prosecutors. I can supply the number for the Prosecutor's Attorneys Association to look into that if you decide to do that. Also, I will be available for questions during this process here today if requested. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, the floor is now closed for public comment. Do we have any additions or deletions to the agenda? Commissioner Marquetti?
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. For our first closed session, I move to go into closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268-1H to discuss the August 14, 2025 written legal opinion of the county's legal counsel. I further move to include Clerk Register Monica McMichael, Finance Director Jen Renfro, HR Director Beth Daly, our county legal counsel Carl Booter, and Ann Surinak. I so move.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
All right. We're in closed session. We'll be right back out afterwards.
Bring us back in the session, so I'm gonna move to go in the closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681H to discuss, to further discuss the August 14, 2025 written legal opinion of the county's legal council. I further move to include clerk registrar McMichael, finance director Jen Renfro, HR director Beth Daly.
Thank you. And the county legal counsel Carl Booter and Anne Surinak, I so move. Say it again. This is the continuation of the first closed session, your mic's not on.
I'm sorry, I would just assume do this in open session.
Okay, well this one here is the, still the, in continuation of the first closed session. So this isn't number two yet.
I don't know what the language says.
I'm reading number one, sir. So this one is for the county to go in a closed session to hear the legal opinion of our county attorney.
Okay.
That's for the board, just like we did before. When I came out, I came out to put us on recess to go back in to continue what we restarted the first time. So this isn't gone to the second one yet.
I think the motion was to go back in open session, I didn't hear anything about recess.
Well.
If it's recessed.
Well, hold on, sir, hold on a second. Right now, I have a motion on the floor and a support.
Could you again repeat that because your mic is off?
All right, we'll say it again. I move to go in the closed session pursuant to MCL 15.2681 Hotel to further discuss the August 14, 2025 written legal opinion of the county's legal council. I further move to include clerk registrar McMichael, finance director Jen Renfro, and HR director Beth Daly, and the county's legal counsel Carl Booter and Anne Surinak, I so move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor and support, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti. Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup. And Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
All right. Now we're back in closed session.
Motion on the floor and support, any discussion? Roll call please.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Yes.
And Commissioner Lee.
Yes, alright. Alright, Mr. Jordan. I'm going to read what you received via email yesterday at 2:21 PM. So, Patrick, tomorrow, meaning today, at the special meeting of the Board of Commissioners, there's going to be a motion to hear complaints brought by Cass County employees against you pursuant to MCL 15.268-1 Alpha of the Open Meetings Act. You may request that discussion be done in closed session. Do you request that the Board have that discussion in closed session? Alright. So... This will not be held in closed session. So, a brief statement, or official statement, the county has received complaints about the county administrator using derogatory language in the workplace, which if true, may violate the county's written policies. So, we have a few, or a few things that we have to accomplish here. Tom?
Okay, I'd like to make a motion. I move to place the county administrator on paid administrative leave pending the completion of an internal investigation into the complaints made against him.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support, discussion. Hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
Yes.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Okay, so we're voting, what are we voting for?
I'm gonna repeat it, or repeat your motion, Tom, or she's reading it.
Wait, 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 I'll see what this is. Where'd this come from? Where did this come from?
That's our legal opinion.
No, this isn't a legal opinion.
Well, that's from our attorney, so we don't mess up anything.
Oh, well, I didn't receive a copy of this.
I, I just got it this morning, minutes before the meeting. I guess we'll resume roll call.
Commissioner Marquetti.
No, I, I, I don't know what this is all about. I'm saying, I gotta say no.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep. Motion passes. Alright, we have, uh... Did we get Lee?
No.
Apology, Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you.
Sorry. Alright, I move to appoint Jennifer Remfro as interim county administrator to fulfill the statutory duties of the county administrator and with the statutory authority of the county administrator until further board action.
Second.
Motion on the floor and support, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Yes ma'am.
Yes, I just wanna say, I, you know, all of this that's going on, I, I, I knew, I talked to Jeremiah yesterday, strictly about the Open Meetings Act. I didn't know any of this, I don't know, seems to me there's been conversations that this entire board has not been involved with. And, you know, I, I certainly don't want to make a mistake. Whatever this board does, it has to be the smartest and best possible thing that we could do. This, Mr. Jordan is our employee, and we're gonna place him on leave and pay him, and he's not working for us then. Okay. Okay, so say the motion again, so I can be germane to the motion.
This motion is I move to appoint Jennifer Remfro as the interim county administrator to fulfill the statutory duties of the county administrator and with the statutory authority of the county administrator until further board action.
Okay, I understand.
Any more discussion? Hearing none, another roll call please.
Commissioner Marquetti.
No.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
Commissioner Grace.
No.
Commissioner Northrup.
No.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
I have five yes, three no.
Alright. And the other one is up to you, Tom.
Okay, I move for the county to conduct a 90-day performance evaluation on the county administrator, lead and directed, led and directed by the chair and vice chair of this board.
Support. Motion on the floor and support, discussion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes sir.
I would be voting no on this, due to due process in the contract, we have a legal contract that says six months.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes ma'am. Oh, oh, okay. Any other discussion? Alright, hearing none, roll call please.
Commissioner Langley.
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence.
Yes.
Chair Jones.
Yep.
Commissioner Barrera.
Yes.
Commissioner Northrup. Commissioner Grace.
No.
Commissioner Lee.
Yes.
And Commissioner Marquetti.
No.
Six yes, two no.
Motion passes. Alright. New business. I don't think we have any other business. Open the floor for public comment, but before I do, I'm gonna say this is not a moment to grandstand or talk about anything that's outside of this county business, and if it gets out of hand, I will end this meeting. You have the floor, in three minutes.
I hope at this point you might suspend the rules and give me a little more time, considering, you know, I always try, I always try to do the right thing, and I, I, I always fail, that's all there is to it. God's word says, "Do not let any unwholesome talk come out of your mouths, but only what is helpful for building others up according to their needs, that it may benefit those who listen." And I have, I have completely failed to do that, not just here, but over the course of my life. This has been kind of a wake-up call to me. I, I come from a different generation, where I guess you can joke about things that aren't accepted anymore. And, uh, when I heard the video of who stopped up the toilet downstairs, I made the joke about Muslims, hiring Muslims, and they own newspaper, we, you know, they own newspaper, and I wiped with my left hand. That's insulting to Muslims, and I do have a very good Muslim friend, too, and, uh... I, yeah, we also have, have good gay friends that live right around the corner from Muskegon, and we get together with them once in a while. It's insulting to them what I said, that the same gentleman walked into the bathroom here and went to the bathroom next to our cleaning lady, and she was in there, and I, I said, "Who would do that?" And someone said, "I believe it was Beth." I said, "Oh, you know, he's married to a man." And me without, my wit is quicker than my internal letting, right away, I said, "I thought they sat down when they peed." That's it. Beth claims she didn't hear what I said, um, because her and Jen were giggling about something. Well, the last thing that was said was, "You know, he's married to a man," so what was the giggling about? I don't know. I didn't say the F-word, as I'm accused of saying, I doesn't, I don't use that. And honestly, when it comes to... Yeah, have you ever seen The Jesus Revolution, the movie? It, it's an excellent movie, you need to watch it. It's about the 1960s, late 60s, early 70s, Jesus Revolution, where hippies were coming out and realizing they'd been lied to. Satan's lied to them, they're coming back to Christ, and they're being baptized and everything else, and I go, "The next revolution in this country, I believe, is gonna be this radical LGBTQ organization over here, and the people involved in it, they're gonna realize I've been lied to, and they're gonna come back to Christ." And we need to be there to love them, not tell jokes about them. And, 'cause who would, why would they come to someone who's been telling them, "We don't want you around, and we, we hate you," you know? And, and with, with Muslims, of course, we, you know, we spend, the churches I've grown up in, we spend millions and millions of dollars sending missionaries all over the world, but you look at what's going on now, and the mission field's coming to us, and that's how we should be acting. I guess that's, uh, that's what I had to say.
Alright, anybody else for public comment?
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes ma'am.
I can't hear.
Um, I just wanna remind the board that we are looking at the county employees as a whole and not just an individual, and it is your guys' responsibility as an employee of the county to protect me as well as others that I work with. I will continue to voice my concerns, whatever they may be, to the proper channels, per your legal counsel and everything it sounds like here. I do wanna clarify a comment that was just made, though. During said meeting that he wanted to cite, he did use the F-word, not F-U-C-K, but a derogatory one towards gays. So, for the record, as an additional person that was in that meeting, I would like that to be known, so have a great day.
Thank you ma'am. Hope stand by. I had let, I forgot to push my timer on the first one, so I'm gonna let people have as much time as they need, so it's fair to everybody. If there's no other objections for anybody else, please, Hope, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair Jones. It's critical that we protect the integrity of our workplace and hold leadership to the same standards we expect of all employees. This matter involves serious allegations of discriminatory and offensive language targeting a county employee. It's not only unprofessional, it may expose the county to liability. The remarks were homophobic and religiously insensitive. They were made during an official county staff meeting in front of multiple witnesses. This goes beyond a poor choice of words. This was targeted, demeaning, and unprofessional, especially coming from a senior county leader. I'd also like to remind you that it's important that we protect these employees of this targeted behavior. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. No. We're, got public comment here?
Hello, I want to thank the board again, because we look up to you for protection and professionalism, and to ensure that we can work in an environment that the world says that we can. So, thank you for taking these concerns seriously during this investigation, the union really appreciates it.
Thank you. For the board, Mr. Jordan wants to speak again. If I don't have, you all don't have any objections, I'll allow him to speak again. Any objections? Turn your mic on? Alright. Let me get my agenda back out. Commissioner announcements, anybody have any announcements? Yes ma'am.
Um, I don't really have any announcements, but can I, am I gonna be, may I make a couple comments?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, first of all, um, we received a memo from the attorney, attorney-client privilege, but my question is, I wasn't afforded the time to read it, then I was afforded some time, but I was not able to read it, because there was quite a bit of conversation going on in the room, and it was a rather lengthy, lengthy memo. In the past, I believe that we have, there's a certain way that you can send, should we have had that memo before today, so we could have read that? It, there is certain way that we can get that sort of thing, and it still remains confidential, because I would like to have read, I still wanna read it, I might go in the office and, and read it, and...
Well, ma'am, I'll tell you that this has been a learning experience for everybody.
Oh, I agree.
And from here on forward, we can correct anything that has been said or done wrong, and that's what we're gonna do from here on out. So, we'll take what we didn't do exactly 100% to anybody's liking, and we're gonna correct it. Anybody else?
Oh, I'm, I'm not.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm not finished, okay. So, I, I have something else to say, and, and that is, is that I think that everybody here knows that, that I have a high regard for our employees. In fact, Mr. Jordan will tell you that once, um, we voted to put him on board, I, I called him, and one of the things I said to him is, "We have a great staff," and we do, we have great employees, and I believe that, and yes, indeed, we do need to protect our employees, but I have to tell you that I am sorely disappointed in the fact that certain things are, all over the county, all over, the employees knew everything, I didn't hear a thing. I was out to dinner two weeks ago, when I heard things that I didn't know anything about, and, and that's, that's not fair to any, it's not fair to anybody, it's this, it's this gossiping that goes on around here, and lots of times, sometimes isn't even, and I'm the last to hear. I just, you know, I just, this whole thing has upset me greatly, I've lost sleep over it. My only hope is, is that we can get past it and get moving and get things done for the county, and that's all I have to say.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Anybody else?
To kinda follow up on Roseanne's comment there, uh, I have had a call as well, speaking about the hearsay that was going on throughout the county, and I'm wondering, how in the world is this getting through, out through the county? Is it the employees that are going out and spreading untruths? Truths? We don't know. So that's why we have to do the investigation, to find out, hopefully, what's true and what's not true, and then we can go on. But I was kind of floored talking with this person last night about this topic, not being able to say anything, and I, and I told this person, "I can't tell you anything that's been going on." Yeah, I know that, but anyhow, it, to me, it wasn't a good conversation to know that this whole situation has gotten out through the county, and not stayed here where it needs to be, because that invokes lies and untruths. We don't need that. Thank you.
Commissioner Barrera.
I support the investigation that's gonna go on, I just wanna take a moment to applaud those employees that took the courage to step forward and speak up towards such indecent behavior that's going on here at the county. We won't stand for it, I won't stand for it, so I, I know it took a lot of courage, a lot of guts to be able to do that, and I hope that we get to the bottom of it very quick.
Thank you sir. Anybody else? Let me get my stuff together.
I move we adjourn.
We are adjourned. Mr. Jordan, I need you to hold off in your office, and could I have either Chief or Sheriff Roach with me as well?